Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to meeting order for May 20, 2019. Please join Councilmember Keno in the pledge allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, we invite you into our meeting as we make decisions on things we are called to steward, land and money. Our tentative budget agenda item is a milestone in a long and thoughtful process to final adoption. Thank you for our provision. We are grateful for the favor over Goodyear to attract and welcome new residents, businesses, and industries. Bless those who give so we can build a strong city. Bless the revenue streams in our budget and increase them mightily. Father, we present our debt and financial obligations to you and ask for your covering over every expenditure. Reveal anything that needs our attention. Bless our capital improvement plans and let each project finish well, on time, at or under budget. Father, bless every city department and function and every leader and employee. I ask that you release new visions, strategies, and innovation over our city. In closing, we ask for your continued hand of protection over our police, fire, and military. We grieve with other cities that have had losses, and we thank you for sustaining us. We pray for your army of angels to always be on active duty to keep our guardians forever safe. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Keno, for that wonderful prayer. Well, we're all here this evening, so let's, we have only one item in the work session. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. Number one, staff is requesting direction on the future usage of three city-owned Western Avenue properties. Deputy City Manager Dan Cottemer, presenting. Dan?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the city-owned properties at the intersection of Western Avenue and Litchfield Road. For the benefit of the public that may be listening, this image shows the area in question tonight at the top of the screen in the blue outline. This slide here shows the same properties from a different perspective and lists their past use. Just to note that the building along Western Avenue has since been sold. That's the one at the bottom there. So we've had several discussions with council in the past about these properties, and there have been a number of potential options considered. The last time we were before council was in February of this year, and staff presented an option to raise several of the buildings in order to create additional green space and parking spaces. At that time, we heard council wanted staff to come back with an alternative option that preserved the buildings, given some of the nostalgic history, some of the buildings. So tonight, even though we're making a recommendation and presenting a new option that we hope will meet council's desired outcome for these properties, we are here seeking your feedback and your direction on these properties. So jumping into the recommendation, our recommendation is to split the property into two parcels, with one being the old fire station and the other, the remaining PD buildings. The image at the top on the right of the screen shows how the property lines look today, and you'll see that the blue lines cross some of the actual buildings, which makes it difficult to split up ownership of the buildings. The image at the bottom shows the proposed property lines. You can see one is outlined in yellow and the other in orange there. We are proposing transferring the parcel at the bottom of the image, parcel one, to the firefighters' charity association for use as a museum with historical preservation restrictions. Additionally, we're recommending that the city sell the other parcel or parcel two at the top of the image, as we did with the Western Avenue property. This slide shows the proposed parcel lines in better detail, a little bit closer up so you can see how they would be split up. Parcel one is at the bottom, outlined in yellow. So this is the fire station parcel. This was the original fire station in the city, most recently used as a 911 facility. It's been a few years since that was in use and the new telecommunications facility was built on this campus. The fire station parcel is valued at approximately $95,000, but it is in need of ongoing maintenance. And if the city held on to it, it would require additional repairs and replacement of certain systems. And that's assuming we don't get into any changes to the facility that would require asbestos abatement. And so by transferring it to the charity, the city would not have to incur these costs, and we would be preserving a building that had some historical value to the community. Parcel two would include the two remaining buildings on the campus. I know it looks like three from this aerial, but really, it's two. And this parcel would include the remaining parking and storage areas on the site. There is parking on all four sides, and this parcel is valued at approximately $425,000. Keep in mind that these buildings also require ongoing maintenance, and there are also system replacements expected soon should we continue to own and operate these facilities. Just a reminder, these buildings are also unoccupied and have been for a while now. And so we are recommending listing this property, parcel two, for sale, similarly to how we handled Western Avenue, and that was selling it directly. We didn't send it to auction. And also, I want to point out that the parking spaces on the south side of the parcel, so at the very bottom of the screen here along the alleyway, six of those spaces are currently licensed for pure patios use due to the restriction or lack of parking options in the area. So the city allowed them to use those spaces at no cost while we figured out what was going to happen with these buildings. So that agreement would need to end in order to move forward with the sale of the property. In sort of short and sweet, so hopefully, you have any questions or feedback for me, certainly happy to answer those questions. And I also have some photographs of what a fire museum might look like, of one from Phoenix. So if you're interested in that, we could put that on Elmo as well. So with that, I'm open to any questions or feedback.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Sherri, Councilman Orotano?
Okay, I'm still kind of with option three that I don't think we quite have here. I like parcel one. My concern is I'd like to save those first, I call them two buildings, but the ones, one's the old Boy Scout, I guess. If you can, where, right, the one that says parcel two and the one right on top, they're kind of hooked together. Those two are hooked together, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, one of those was the old Boy Scout building, wasn't it?
Yes, I believe it's this top northernmost structure.
Okay. My concern is if we just sell it off and we don't have any deed restrictions, we're going to a really nice museum that people are going to have invested their own money in, and then we could have a gas station. Then we have, could have like a gas station or something that isn't a good conforming use. So that is my concern about selling that. I would like to see, we need parking, that third building in the back, I think it's the old 911. Is that the squad center? The one of the, yeah, that one. That one. You know, I don't have a problem getting rid of that and using that as parking, but I would like to see something come forward where for that part, those are the two buildings and that land in front that we have some sort of, if we're going to make that a museum, that we have something that is kind of a complimentary use. That's my concern, just putting it up for sale, and who knows who's going to take it. So I'm 100% more with parcel one. I think that's a great idea. It gives the historic character. Parcel two, I'd be good with a parcel two, parcel three type of thing. So we have some sort of complimentary use, like a park or some, something along those lines that if people are going there, then there's a coffee shop or something along those lines, not just, you know, a hardware store or a gas station or something like that.
Thank you. And I do want to point out, there is a PAD for this site that does limit or restrict some of those types of uses, like tattoo parlors, for example, wouldn't be allowed. I don't have that list in front of me.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see the tattoo vape shop next door to this. So I do have concerns about just opening and putting it out on the market. I'd like it, I guess, I just don't see that vision for parcel two, but parcel one, I'm okay with.
All right. Councilwoman Hampton?
Yeah, I would agree with a lot of that as well. I like the use of the transferring it to the United Goodyear Firefighters 405 for the first parcel. But yeah, the other parcel, I mean, I know parking is a big thing, and I know there's a cost to raising the squad center, but I would like to see a good use for the, for the other part, exactly what Councilwoman Orotano said as well. So I don't know if it needs to be a park. I'm not sure what we could even put there yet. I know people looking at the buildings across the street as well, so I'm not sure what, what kind of used to be there, but I would like to see maybe, depending on the use, I'd like to see that section, that only the old Boy Scout building saved, but the squad center, I could see that going away and making it a parking lot. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Councilmember Zellul?
On the old fire station that has some history to it? Again, for the public, what was the plans on that?
The proposal tonight would be to transfer ownership to the charity association of the Goodyear Firefighters Labor Union and allow them to do some repairs or restoration of that facility and turn it into a museum.
And they would use that, they would be responsible for the
Yes.
And electricity and everything associated with that?
That's correct. All maintenance or future repairs would be their responsibility.
I have no problem with that.
Councilmember Stip?
I have no problem with the concept of, I almost said something wrong, with the proposal to have the fire union take over the fire station, and I'll leave it to the rest of the council's discretion on the other parcel.
Councilmember Keno?
Well, I also support the transference of parcel one to the firefighter charity. I think that that is a good use. There's been a lot of, between the work that Sunny and Pure Patio and Plus Flight has generated a lot of activity in that corridor, which we've been waiting to see. I know people are asking all the time, you know, about Bayla Center, what's going to happen there? And probably whatever happens there might be a catalyst eventually for, for what would happen on our street. Parking is an issue. We all, we all know that, but I do support the, the transference, I think, of parcel two to the private sector to see what they could do with, with the land.
Vice Mayor?
Amy Campbell? Well, I have a couple of questions, since FIRE did not come to any of council to talk to us, to share what their vision is. I'm somewhat concerned about it, to the extent that they are a nonprofit, and we did not offer any other nonprofit the opportunity to buy any of the other buildings, to take over full maintenance of them. So we are setting a new president for this city that we will have to honor from here on if we do do what you want us to do. My next question is, what are they going to do with the Boy Scout hut? Is it going to be open to the public so everyone can come in and see it as the fire museum should be, an open museum so that the public can enjoy it? And it be open similar to the one downtown? But I don't know what, I don't know what they want to do with it, and I just want to be, I want a level playing field for all the nonprofits in Goodyear. It's extremely important, whatever we do, because we're setting a president here. And I'm all for saving old buildings, if they're really old, and if they can serve a purpose so that all of Goodyear can enjoy it, then just saving a building to sit there empty and say it's the first fire station, because we're getting rid of the first police station. So.
There's a couple of things I never wanted to address. First is the Boy Scout or Cub Scout, I'm not exactly sure, was a separate structure from the one that we are proposing transferring to the firefighters' charity, so that would not be included.
That's the Boy Scout hut there?
Yeah, way up here at the top. So the fire station is down here, and, you know, we think that this is sort of unique and wouldn't set precedent for any other situation, simply because this was the first fire station in the city, and kind of see that as unique. And then I would also remind council that this discussion on Western Avenue sort of started a few years ago with an RFP that was done seeking nonprofits who are interested in using one or more of the facilities to offer services to the city. And we had been given feedback at that time that that didn't seem like the most appropriate use. Now, certainly, you could say that, that does make more sense at this time, but just wanted to bring that up. And then as far as the actual plans for the fire station, if it pleased the mayor, Julie, I could invite Steve Gilman up to kind of give that vision to you if that's something of interest.
Is it going to be open to the public, Dan? That's what I want to know.
Yes, the commitment is that-
Is it going to be open to the public? And if so, that's fine.
It wouldn't be, I don't believe, seven days a week type operation, but when it is open, it would be open to Goodyear residents free of charge.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm the last one. I like your recommendation. I would like to have the firefighters in the building. I think it's history, and I think that for young people, they always want to meet a firefighter. They always want to see their equipment, and I'm certainly, they could fill it with very interesting items. And to me, that's, that's a very good tourist attraction in that area. And as far as causing any concern, I think it's the least of anything, because again, you don't know what buildings, what's going, what business is going in there, you don't know what the, so I'm, I'm for that one. Yeah, and I was just going to say, and you have the fire truck, which I've driven and rode in before, I didn't drive it, and I just think it's a perfect fit for it. And they're taking the cost and the running of it, and that certainly takes it off our hands. And I think the other property, why does it sell?
Sell the other property? Sell the other property? Are y'all getting that part?
So I, I've heard a few things, so I just want to make sure I, I understand, and obviously, we're not taking a vote tonight in a work session.
That was your number one, right?
So as far as parcel one goes, if we can go back to the presentation.
Whatever, what number one was, that's this one.
So parcel one, the old fire station, I'm hearing consensus that we should move forward with transferring that to the firefighters' charity.
All right.
Okay. And then on parcel two, hearing a few things, the recommendation was to go ahead and sell this property. Is that, is that what I heard?
Or two. I want, I'm for two to sell.
Okay.
Of course, we're not voting, but-
Right, right. We're not voting, but then others have a-
About it.
It depends.
Yes. That's the one I, I am not just for selling unless we're very specific on some sort of deed restrictions or something that's complimentary use. Like I said, I don't want to see like a hardware store or a Circle K or something like that go in there. So I'm not for just putting that out for sale. Maybe there is another nonprofit. I thought the Historical Society was interested in one point.
They were, but they didn't give us an option. It wasn't offered to us.
Any other comments here? Because I don't think we've gotten a, yes, Goyala?
Yeah, I mean, very similar. I just was curious what are, what the restrictions are there, and I would like it to fit into that area. I mean, I'm sure, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine what, I'm not sure what kind of private business would go there. Yeah, I just is curi, be curious what the restrictions are on it.
Through the zoning, the PAD?
Zoning on it.
Yeah, we can definitely follow-
It could be just a mute point, and there's going to be, it's already built into our, our system. So I'm not trying to take away from the private industry. I think it could be something really great there for private industry, private as well.
So when they're finished, would you tell us what we said to you and what you feel like you heard, when this is all done, please?
Yes.
Any comments over here?
I like that.
Yes.
Councilman Keno?
I'll, I'll put my Three Rivers Historical Society hat on and to say that they are not in a position to purchase a building. We are trying to work with the Litchfield Park Historical Society, is there, we're undertaking a heritage center, but this isn't a project that the Historical Society is. Now, I think they would say that they are interested in preserving it because it was built by the, the residents, the early residents. It definitely has sentimental value, but it has languished for a long time. I've, I've been through it. I, I think somebody needs to have a fresh vision for that, that land and bring it back to life.
So what does that mean?
She's asking what that means.
That means to, to sell, to give it, yes, I concurred with the first.
To sell it.
The first recommendation.
No one's, no one's. So let's just go down here, just make sure on the sell.
Please, yes.
Who is for selling that? Keeping the fire station, selling the two, and we're not voting or, okay, I'm just, who is thinking in their head very strongly about this to the firehouse to use for the museum?
Firehouse is yay, the other, nay.
Okay, well, then let's do that. Don't, don't do yay and nay, just say you're thinking. Okay, so you, you're-
Option one, I think's good.
Okay.
And the, for the fire department, for the fire, but the other one, I just more, like more information on what could be there.
I can't hear you, and so-
I would like more information about what can and can't be there.
Are you researching or developing it?
What the zoning is and what the parcel problem is? Do we have that information?
Yeah, just so I can, because I think private would be fine, but depends on what could be there.
And I think that we've got it, so why don't we take that information for?
We don't know off the top of our heads what the restrictions were, so we'll have to follow up in writing to council on what those were, but there, there are very specific uses that are not allowed in this entire campus, including those buildings you can't see on the other side of that alley, so.
Yeah, because I'm not opposed to selling them. I just want to know what could be there, so I can say if I am fully-
You know, the thing about what could be there, the, the problem we've had in the area is what wants to be there? And so I, that's what we really have to think of. Okay, so if somebody thinks you're going to get a high restaurant there, I would question that. If you were going to, we've got so many parcels throughout the city that, that meet that need. So, so we, I think we have to really, you know, it would be nice if we could get a small, I tried at one time to get them to build a drugstore there, one of the owners, just to, you know, I screened place and I didn't get anywhere. So, so anybody want to add anymore? Let's just do the fire station, and let's make sure that they have the attitude that, that we would. Oh, we might have some information here.
So some quick thinking on staff part here. I have the prohibited uses in the PAD.
Speak up a little bit.
Yes.
The two of us have got an echo tonight because of that.
So the uses that are specifically not allowed at this site are non-chartered financial institutions, pawn shops, adult bookstore, adult novelty store, and adult theater, automotive service stations, automobile bodywork. So those are the uses specifically prohibited on this campus.
Does that help? Okay, so I'll go back to the original thought that each of you are having. Are we pretty much together on a fire station there, the, the?
We all are.
All right, so you've got that for sure.
Yes, that's clear.
So now let's work to the next one. So do you see in your mind if that was bare land, what the, what the possibilities would be? So.
If I could have Elmo back. So I also just want to throw out the option that was discussed with council last time, which included tearing down one or more of the facilities and creating additional parking and green space. So this was one of those concepts. I just want to bring it up to show sort of the magnitude of cost that you'd be looking at if you were to make any sort of changes to the campus.
So if they did, I mean, it's sort of like the little park, but essentially, it's for more parking?
Yes. We were trying to, in this design, buffer the view of a parking lot from Litchfield, so it just didn't look like a big empty parking lot.
Okay, so, all right, do you have another one that can look at what you thought for that?
But is this if we sell it? That's what's going to happen?
No, that's if we wanted to put that, we could do that.
No, the mayor had mentioned, imagine if this was vacant land, and so it just triggered a thought that perhaps revisiting these slides, so you have an idea of what we were talking about last time.
Because everybody did not remember this, so.
Sure.
And this is?
This again is a similar theme. We were creating additional parking in the back here. This is the alleyway separating the buildings that are facing Western. And then this particular one is not being recommended, but at the time, it was preserving the fire station down here, and then this concept had the train station being relocated, which was the most expensive of the options we presented. And then this was the Goldilocks option in the middle, which again, additional parking kept the fire station, but took the remaining facilities down for park and green space.
Any comments on this one, design concept? No. So I think this is out.
Okay.
So you've got one answer tonight?
Yes.
And that's the fire station.
Yeah, and it sounds like there's general support for selling it, but not necessarily everybody in favor of that idea. There might be some who would like additional options.
I think you have for the fire truck. How's that?
Okay.
I have a question, if I may.
You may.
Is it $425,000 for parcel two, those three little buildings there? That's-
Can you go back to the presentation?
If we put it for sale, are we selling all three as one or separate as one?
Yes. So the proposal is this orange outline here?
Yeah.
Would all be sold as one?
For $425 is what the asking price would be. Okay.
That appraisal was doing our best since these property lines don't look this clean today.
And what was the real appraisal of all of the land before we sold that one piece to Sonny's Gym?
I believe it was $550,000.
So we're not really losing as much?
No. And then we sold Sonny's for $225?
$200.
It doesn't add up?
About $200,000.
Still doesn't add up. Yeah, Linda should have the figures.
Somebody will answer that question for you. Thank you.
Yeah. The reason that they're not adding up is because they were appraised-
Could you speak up just a little bit more?
I'm sorry. My name is Linda Beals. I'm the real estate coordinator here at the city. The reason they don't add up is because they were appraised separately. The buildings located along Litchfield were appraised as one property at about $550, and then the property over on Western Avenue, which was sold to Sonny's, was $200.
Okay. So how much was the fire station appraised at?
It was not appraised separately. We did look at it based on the values that were established in the appraisal, which was $65 a square foot.
Dan says $95,000. I mean, I'm just figuring out, because someone may want to come in and just graze part of it and use the other part, but they're not going to be thrilled if they find out that fire station was only $95,000 and they're paying $425. That's what's so unbelievable for that property there and the condition it's in. It's just, gosh, it just doesn't make sense.
People normally, to look and-
You're our real estate agent, what do you think?
Well, I think that they should sell it and leave it up to the market to put something there in the design. It is very unusual.
Yeah.
And it is-
And if it doesn't sell, Mayor, we can always go back to the drawing board.
If it doesn't sell, we'll rip them all down and have all the parking you want in the, in the area. How's that?
Can I have one more question?
Councilman Lortano?
Clearly, I'm going to be the one on the six to one vote here this time when we finally get there. It's those front two buildings that I just get heartburn over because, yeah, we have no history, we have no old buildings, we just don't have them, you know? And with all the roads closed, getting home, I've been going up Old Avondale, you know, that way, and I'm like, well, that's really nice. You know, it's got some character, it's got some class, what they've done, they've gotten... I just think selling them and not, you know, it's just, that's, I'm just not going to agree to that. Fire station, I love that idea. And that third building, the police squad building in the back there, if you guys wanted to sell that or raise that or whatever, I don't have heartburn about that one in the back.
You want us to save these two?
I want to save the two, the front Litchfield. And I might just not be in the winning side on this one, but just for the record, I think that history is important, and we've got no history, so that's what I would like to see.
Oh, my gosh.
Anybody else on that one, thought of that? So I think that's only one thought, so. What, did you just slide over to that? Is that, was you?
I like that same idea.
All right, so then that's two to five.
I'm not voting, though.
I wasn't counting.
Not voting, but what I'm hearing, Mayor, is we do have consensus to move forward with transferring the fire station and bringing, selling the other parcel.
Did everybody hear that? All right, you have it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to give him a little to go. Since there's no further discussion on this item, I will now recess this meeting so we can conduct a special joint community facilities district meeting. And before we do that, I just want you to know this is a new format we're using. So it's a little rough, but we're going to work through it until we have it run smoothly. So this meeting is adjourned, and now I'd like to call to order the Community Facilities District, May 20th, 2019. This is a joint meeting of the following community facilities district. One, Community Facilities General District, number one. Two, Palm Valley Community Facilities District, number two. Three, Community Facilities Utilities District, number one. Four, Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities District. Five, Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities District, two. And six is Cotton Flower Community Facilities District. Seven, Australia Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District. Eight, King Ranch Community Facilities District. Nine, Centerra Community Facilities District. And ten, Cortina Community Facilities District. Everyone is present, so let's go on. Now is the time for a citizen who would like to address the C F D Board on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Board. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor, but can I also clarify that you actually recessed the regular meeting to come to this meeting? It wasn't adjourned, the previous meeting.
I, didn't I?
It was just a recess, not an adjourn.
I thought I did recess it, didn't I?
You said adjourned, but that's okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that we're coming back.
So I have to say the recess, so then I'll go back and I-
We'll get used to it.
All right, thank you. All right, so there's no speaker cards. So will the, excuse me, district clerk, please read consent agenda items one through 11 by title only, please.
One, approval of minutes. Two, approve the tentative budget for the Goodyear Community Facilities General District, number one, for fiscal year 2019-2020?
Sir, we're waiting a minute. You have most of the time. So now we recessed. Sir? Mayor, we do have to wait for the, for the 5:45 because the agenda actually said the 5:45, so we do have to take a recess for 10 minutes.
So how do I do this? Because I'm in a meeting, I've already called it to order, so.
We're just going to take a brief recess before you take any legal action on tonight's agenda.
Okay, so.
It'll take 10 minutes.
I'm going to be taking a recess for 10 minutes, and that makes it, what time is that we're talking about?
5:45.
Pardon me?
5:45, Mayor.
All right, we will recess this till 5:45. Thank you.[1123.41]
We'll now continue the meeting. I, we are at the CFD, the Community Facility District Meeting, and I have called it to order, and I have given you all the ten community facility districts. Everyone is present, and now is the time to, a citizen would like to address the board on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the board. Is there any, excuse me, any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, will the district clerk please read consent agenda items one through eleven by title only, please?
One, approval of minutes. Two, approve the tentative budget for the Goodyear Community Facilities General District Number One for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Three, approve the tentative budget for the Palm Valley Community Facilities District, District Number Three for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Four, approve the tentative budget for the Goodyear Community Facilities Utilities District Number One for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Five, approve the tentative budget for the Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Six, approve the tentative budget for the Wildflower Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Seven, approve the tentative budget for the Cotton Flower Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Eight, approve the tentative budget for the Austraea Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Nine, approve the tentative budget for the King Ranch Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Ten, approve the tentative budget for the Centerra Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget. Eleven, approve the tentative budget for the Cortina Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019-2020, and set a hearing date for the budget.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, then can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
All right, I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, and second one Councilman Basillo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chairman Campbell?
Aye.
Board Member Basillo?
Aye.
Board Member Loretano?
Aye.
Board Member Stip?
Aye.
Board Member Hampton?
Aye.
Board Member Keno?
Aye.
Chairman Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Are there any information items to address to the Community Facilities District?
Okay, thank you. There being no further business to discuss the Community Facilities District Agenda, I will now adjourn the Community Facilities District Meeting. I will now convene the regular meeting. We have one communication item, and so we'll go directly to it. This is an organizational update by the Fighter Country Partnership President and CEO Ron Seitz, and Chairman Bob, Bob Bambauer. Gentlemen, come forward. This is an exciting time for us. We love hearing about the organization, and I think it's been a while since we've had a briefing, so we welcome you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Ron Seitz. I'm the President and CEO of Fighter Country Partnership and Fighter Country Foundation. Along with me is a gentleman you guys know, Mr. Bob Bambauer, who's on our Board of Directors. Very exciting, just to, just to give you an update, I'll do my best to keep this five to six minutes long. Ha ha, fifty-six fighter wing, you know, you guys get that stuff, right? Yep, yep, yep. Ms. Darcy McCracken, nice to see you here in the city of Goodyear. You look good. Nice. Okay, so Mayor, it was, it was lunch probably four or five years ago when I took you and Ms. Mayor Walcott out to lunch to give you an idea about this crazy thing that we're working on. So, that's really the purpose of this brief, so we can give you an update and say thank you for what you guys do.
You're quite welcome.
Our organization, this is a little bit redundant for most of you, we're a dual umbrella organization, we're a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4). Our mission is pretty simple, we support the men, women, families, and mission of Luke Air Force Base. Kind of the elevator speech is, we do what the base is not allowed to do, and we say what the base is not allowed to say. The 501(c)(3) is the do, and the 501(c)(4) is the say. And we support the base in three facets, through morale and well-being, through culture and tradition, and through mission sustainability. And we've been doing this very successfully for the last decade. And mainly, our core business is morale and well-being and culture and tradition, and it's through programs and services. Here's an example of some of the programs and services that we provide that really enhance that quality of life. Notice that word, enhance. We don't use the word improve, because improve implies that something is bad. So, we enhance programs out at Luke Air Force Base, and a lot of these programs are programs that we started. And as senior leadership is starting to get more involved within the programs that we've brought to the base, these programs have grown and been established for six, seven, some going eight years now. And there's nobody in the country bringing programs to an active-duty military installation at the capacity that we are. And so when we get to go out into the community and explain to our stakeholders how we're supporting the base and how we're enhancing that quality of life, it's really increased our donor base, and it's increased their ability to become involved. Here's a great picture of what we call our Blazer Box Program, where we're sending care packages downrange, not just to the airmen at Luke Air Force Base, but to the Marines at Luke Air Force Base, and also to the sailors at Luke Air Force Base. Yes, there's eight hundred and fifty sailors in the desert out at Luke. So, our programs and services is our core. But because we've become so successful, and we have some, some fundraising events that are successful, it's allowed us to increase our scope of work to the point where, on top of programs and services, we are now improving facilities at Luke Air Force Base. We did about a half a million dollar renovation of their fire station. We did a complete renovation and add-on of a flight line kitchen. This is the area where maintainers were coming off the flight line into an open veranda to eat lunch during the summer when it's a hundred and fifteen degrees outside. We identified this area as an area of need, because I would drive by and I would see airmen in their cars with their air conditioning running, so they could grab a quick bite to eat, and then run back out on the flight line. So that was about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. We just completed the Security Forces Guard Mount Room. Every, every day, there's three guard mount changes out at Luke Air Force Base for their three hundred security forces, and at two-thirty in the afternoon is when they do a shift change. They do it outside in full Kevlar, full gear with their M16s. They've been doing it outside since nineteen forty-one. So, we come in and we see these areas of need, obviously, the base, their, their pride, their integrity is so high, they're not going to ask for anything, but because our relationship with the base is so strong, and we understand where those certain unique areas of need might be, we can bring projects like this to the table. I am also proud to announce the Honor Guard Facility, we, we, we identified a single donor for this one point four six million dollar project. And if you're not familiar with our Honor Guard, I know you all are, you know, they'll do over a thousand events a year. And these are volunteers, they're nurses, they're maintainers, they're firefighters. This is a volunteer job for them, there's twenty-two Honor Guard members, a thousand events a year they'll do, of which six hundred of those are military funerals. And when you're driving down on July thirteenth, when it's a hundred and fourteen degrees outside, you'll see six airmen carrying a casket with a flag on it in their dress blues, training outside. So, again, another one of those unique opportunities where, you know what, we can build a nice little house for them, and sell all their own, own indoors. So, as a municipality, you guys have always been very supportive of us, and we appreciate that. So, we want to make sure you understand what we're doing, how we've increased our scope of work, and we're here to say, simply say thank you. And Bob, to show our appreciation as professional pretenders, if it's okay if we approach, you know, we, we like to share round metal objects.
Oh, no, no, he's watching, yes, don't worry.
Oh, that's how it's done, thank you.
How nice.
Well, if you'll just stay there, gentlemen, usually we ask the council if they have any other things they would like to talk about, and I'm assuming you're finished with your presentation, right?
Yes, my last slide is, we thank you for your support, and if you have any questions or comments, we'd love to answer.
Counsel? Any questions, any comments? Councilman Loretano?
I, I guess I'll start it off. Thank you both and everyone else at Fighter Country Partnership for what you all do. You don't even know about the holes that you guys have found and how that's going to change, how that changes the lives of our military, so thank you, and God bless you for the work you do for our men and women in the service.
Any other comments? Councilman Basillo?
No, I just want to echo that, I, I appreciate everything that you do, and again, thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Any other? Councilman Stip?
You know, I have the privilege of working at military installations all across the country. It is always astonishing to me, the lack of support that many of them have. And coming from this area with the Luke Air Force Base and the community support, I've known no other, no other thing than being supportive of that mission. So, I, I really appreciate having that and talking very highly about it when I'm in other parts of the country, that we don't, we don't suffer from that same disease, and that's because of the work you're doing, so thank you.
Well, I'm the last, but I...
Oh, I was going to be last, but can I?
No, I'm, I'm going to be last, thank you.
Okay, okay. I don't know, Bob, if you or Ron are military veterans, but my husband served twenty-five years, and I can tell you, in the twenty-five years we were in the military, there was such a great need for so many of the programs that you've started, and helped with making life so much better for the airmen stationed at a base, that we wish we could have had throughout our career. But, the Air Force doesn't think like that, and it's wonderful that we have a private partnership that's willing to step up and do this for the families, because it is a big sacrifice in today's age to be a part of the military. With the deployments and with the stress that is going on now in the world for our military, it's really important. And I do know firsthand a lot of your programs, because I still cook with the Protestant Women of the Chapel, and we still provide meals to that flight line all the time, and they love that flight kitchen. So, thank you all so much. Fighter Country Partnership is so special to me, when I go back to DC with the National League of Cities and the Military's Community Council, which I'm a member, I always talk about the relationship that has been established with the military, because so often the military does not look favorably on the civilian community, thinking that they are going to try to tell them how to run the military, I think. And we've just been so lucky that we have had extraordinary commanders at Luke that have embraced your efforts, and we thank you and all of the members of the men and women who belong to Fighter Country. And I am a very proud member, I pay my dues every year.
Well, lastly, that's what the mayor is supposed to do, I have to agree with Wally with many of the things she said. Same as Wally, I, thirty years of military wife, and, and I'm, when you introduced me to this organization, you know how hesitant I was. And I kept saying to you, oh, no, 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 we don't go beyond the fence line, they'll never let you do this, they'll never approve, and I, I was so resident, I was so frightened about getting involved in it, because I just didn't think that the higher up would, would agree to this. But you've done a marvelous job, and they have. And when you see that other cities have come to us and the area and said, how did you do it? You know, how did you get your people to, 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 to go with this? And I don't know how you did it, so you must be a real good salesperson up at the Pentagon. But it works, it works, and the one thing that is really, Bob, I know you love the program, and you've learned so much, and had experience you would have never had as a, a non-military. And so I think they, you've introduced patriotism and love a country, and, and that means something. We don't have a lot of that in this day and age, always. And so you're, you're growing that feeling, and so thank you very much for what, what you do.
Well, we appreciate that, and it's been a collaborative effort, all the cities are obviously collectively supportive of Luke Air Force Base, which gives us a lot of empowerment to do the things that we do. You have a lot of staff members and residents that drive around with this Sound of Freedom plate, which we greatly appreciate too. I know the city manager, I believe Christian, and Rob, and Jessica all have that plate. Darcy, do you have yours yet? Uh-oh, okay. We have some key changes that we'll leave with, with you as well, too, that represent this little license plate. But again, Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for everything that you guys do to support us.
Thank you, have a good evening. Oh, just a second. One second here. I know, I'm trying to find where I'm at on this, because I don't have it. I, I don't, it's not in order, so... Yeah, I should be on the consent agenda, but this is... Why don't you come around, why don't you come around? You have, you have me, given me a lot of papers. This is where I should be here. This is who?
We need to ask for the speakers. So, there's, there's a page right before this.
Oh, and that should be it. Okay, all right. All right, let's try it, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does one, anyone from the audience like to speak? All right, then move on. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items three, three through eleven by title only, please?
Number three, approval of minutes. Number four, approve the fiscal year 2019 budget transfers. Number five has been polled. Number six, adopt resolution number 2019-1966, approving the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Phoenix and City of Goodyear for emergency dispatch services, and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute any and all documents necessary for the administration of the IGA. Number seven, adopt resolution number 2019-1960, amending the municipal user fee schedule by modifying fees within the city clerk's office, non-commercial and commercial public records request fees, and by modifying fees within the engineering department, traffic control permit fees, and providing for an effective date. Number eight, approve the acceptance and termination of easements associated with the bungalows at Austraea Development. Number nine, adopt resolution number 2019-1971, abandoning a portion of North Cerebral Avenue in exchange for a portion of North Pebble Creek Parkway, and authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution and accept two public utility and access easements associated with the abandonment. Number ten, approve the acceptance of the traffic control easement for the intersection of Austraea Parkway and San Miguel Avenue. And number eleven, approve an extension to the map of dedication for APS Bullard Substation subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Yes, Councilman Basillo?
Number seven.
Number seven. All right, then anybody else on the council? All right, let's, why don't we do this, why don't we get a motion for, for three, four, six, eight, nine, ten, and eleven? Okay, and then we'll go back and discuss this one, the Councilman Basillo has pulled.
I want to make sure I got the right one, it has to do with the user fees, is that the right one?
It says number seven, right?
User fees, yes.
Yes, yes. The municipal user fee schedule, all right, that's what we're going to hold back. So, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilmember Loretano, a second one Councilmember Keno. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Basillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, so we're going to go back to seven, and we have, yes, we're going to have Lori Wiggum-Raw, Finance Manager Budget and Research, present.
All righty, I will just give you a kind of a brief overview of the process that we went through, and then attempt to answer your questions. We each year reach out to the departments to determine whether their user fees are meeting their needs, meeting their cost structure. When those are received in the finance department, we do a review of those, and then go through determining what items should move forward and take them into consideration in preparing the budget. Not all the requests that were made departments have come forward. One of the reason is, I will remind you that we are in the process right now of selecting the, the service contract to perform the extensive user fee study and cost allocation study that's been carried over a couple of times. Part of that will heavily review development-related fees, in, in part of that process, because that's one of the fee areas that we have a lot of interest in making some changes in. However, the item that's coming forward today is an item that's a simplification, makes sense right now to bring that forward outside that process. In addition, the city clerk item, we're charging about twice what our costs are, and user fees shouldn't recover that much more than our costs, and that's why that item is coming forward now specifically to be removed. So, other than that, be happy to answer questions, the two department heads involved are also available to answer questions on those specific fees.
Thank you, Lori. So, for discussion, do I have to go ahead and ask again? Just go into discussion.
You would need a motion in a second in order to have it on...
I can't hear the word she said.
You will need a motion in a second?
Yeah.
In order to have it on the table to discuss.
Could I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, a second by Councilman Basillo. All right, we're open for council discussion, I'm going to give it to Councilman Basillo.
On the fees on the engineering, are we within, I guess, typically what's, what's kind of charged out there? Are we competitive? I guess is my question.
Rebecca, I'll handle that. Thank you, Lori, and thank your Councilmember Basillo. Yes, and I, if I could just step back just a little bit and give a background on the current fee schedule we have, it was established in two thousand, and currently... It was established in 2000 and currently it does not differentiate depending on whether you're closing a road, whether you're restricting one lane, whether you're just closing a sidewalk or just putting a warning sign in our right-of-way. Just to give you an example, for the closure of Bullard Road that we have going right now, for 10 days, it would have been $360. For a warning sign that was going to be in our right-of-way for nine months that was literally off to the side, just warning of some work that was going to be done, was going to be $17,000. So, we're attempting to put in place a fee schedule that makes sense based on the type of work that you're doing and the impact that it has on our public. And what we did is we looked at many of our adjacent cities, Surprise, Glendale, Tempe, Mesa, and what we did is we essentially adopted what Mesa has in place, which does specifically for a sidewalk restriction, it's $20 a day. For a lane restriction, it's $75 a day. If you're going to close an arterial road, it's $2,500 a day. And again, the reason behind that is we want our contractors to think long and hard and plan on how they're doing their construction work. Because in this case, because it was not monetarily disincentivizing to them, they did not come up with, as an example, they could have put millings along the side of the road so that we wouldn't have had to close the road, so that we could have allowed traffic on Bullard. Again, I'm not saying that would have been the solution. I'm just saying because it wasn't monetarily negatively impacting them, we couldn't have those conversations. So, again, we did look at adjacent municipalities. Some are simpler than ours, some are more complex. We picked one that we felt really met the needs of making sure that we were charging based on the work that you were doing and how you were impacting the driving public.
Questions?
No, I appreciate the answer. I think one of my questions was already answered when it dealt with that you have something already in the works. Because as I was going through it, I either missed or I didn't see that in the staff report. But the other question I have, and it's probably in the one that's coming forward later, is we've had this discussion, that 80/20 rule where you have people that aren't doing the red lines right and they have about five shots at it versus, you know, maybe three's the max and you start them all over. I'm not sure what the solution is, but to encourage those to pay attention to your red lines so you're not, especially in this environment we have now with the workload that we have. We don't want a few people tying up the staff unnecessarily. Is that part going to be coming back in what you're working on right now going forward?
And thank you, Councilmember Pizzillo. And actually, we're going to do that one in advance of the one that Lori spoke about. And honestly, it's my fault. We intended to bring that forward on June 3rd, but I haven't had the time to spend really on focusing on that. In addition, I wanted that particular one to go in front of our development forum, what we're recommending, because when I came back, I wanted to be able to share with you that we'd already communicated that with the development community. We're planning a forum in either the third or the fourth week of June right now. So, I think I'll be coming back in August. That'll give us time to hear what their concerns are and then create a program that meets the needs of both us and the developer because ultimately, I think that the program we're interested in will benefit them as well as it does us because it really holds their engineer and their architect up to the standards that they need to be, which ultimately would not cost them as much money.
And I appreciate that. I think the emphasis needs to be, because of the workloads that we have on there, is not to incentivize those that kind of disregard your red lines because it doesn't cost them anything or it's minimal for them to go ahead and stretch the time out. So, I appreciate those efforts. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmember, also stress that the study that we will be moving forward with, part of the scope of work will be comparisons to other valley cities so we can answer questions about competitiveness and how they may differ from those other areas as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, the first item on business is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone the city-owned lands to the Public Facilities District with a final PAD district overlay. Open the public hearing. Long Range Planner Joe Schmidt will present. Joe?
Good evening, mayor and council. As you introduced, this is the rezoning request for the City of Goodyear Public Facilities Campus. It's located west of Estrella Boulevard, north, oops, hit my arrow, west of Estrella Boulevard, north of the Buckeye Irrigation District Canal, about 800 feet east of the Cerebral Road Alignment, which is just off of this map, and south of the Broadway Road Alignment. There is about 155 acres that consists of eight separate parcels and the existing land uses on the property include the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility, the Public Works Department Administration Building and Yard, the Fleet Vehicle Maintenance Building, the Dog Park, and the BMX Bicycle Racetrack. The existing zoning of the property is, of the eight parcels, they're in four different zoning districts right now. The portion we just acquired recently for the water treatment plant, surface water treatment plant, that is, is owned under the Riverside Park Preliminary PAD. We have a small piece here that is zoned I-2 with the Estrella Commerce Park PAD overlay. There's a little piece, where did my arrow go? There's a little triangular piece down here that's a half an acre that still remains zoned agricultural, that never did get caught by previous rezoning requests. And then, the rest of it is zoned Public Facilities District. The proposed zoning would take the entire 155 acres and place it in a single zoning district category, which would be the Public Facilities District with a PAD overlay. The PAD overlay is necessary to allow some additional permitted uses such as the water treatment facility and the vehicle maintenance facility. Typically, the vehicle maintenance facility would be a use permit use, but we didn't process a use permit for it, so now we're making it a permitted use through the PAD overlay. We modified the height standards to allow an increase in height for a communications tower that primarily would be used with the SCADA system to remotely control facilities and storage tanks. We modified the fencing standards to allow chain link where appropriate, but not along public street frontages. And we modified landscaping standards to limit landscaping to those areas that are accessible to the public. We eliminated a requirement that might possibly apply to within the treatment plant where it wouldn't make sense. And then, we modified the standards with respect to metal buildings to allow the treatment process buildings in particular to be constructed of metal. The administration building will be constructed of block, which is where the public would be greeted on that, on the surface water treatment plant site. Wanted to point out too, that in this area, the future SR-30 is expected to come through and the property that's outlined with the black dash on this slide is where the alignment for the road is expected to go. There'd be about 20 acres of land that is owned by the City of Goodyear that would be consumed for that project at a future date. That is undergoing the environmental process right now and a decision firming up the alignment should occur within the next couple of months. The surface water treatment facility, as I mentioned, will be on the Westerly 40 acres of the 155. Phase 1 is the area in white here, which will be the, would be the treatment process for the first 8 million gallons a day. The light green color is where the phase 2 expansion would go, which would take the capacity up to 16 million gallons a day. And then, with expansion into the light blue area in phase 3, that would take the capacity up to 22.4 million gallons a day. This is a little bit of a blow-up, probably not big enough to read it easily, but it does try to convey that the red line here is where the raw water will enter the plant by way of a 24-inch line and go into the process train as it goes through the clarification and disinfectant and all that, exits the plant down here. And again, another 24-inch line goes up the line in blue, which takes it out to the distribution This is a rendering of the proposed plant looking south. Again, the water is coming in, will come into the plant through a 24-inch raw water line that actually is six miles long, that extends from the plant site to the corner of Lower Buckeye and Avondale Boulevard, so where the connection to the SRP system will allow the city to take delivery of CAP water. Then, it would flow through the ozone facility and chemical facility where it would be disinfected. You have the filtration basins here where it filter out any kind of particulates or solids. And then, it exits the plant here and it comes by way of a finished water distribution line that would go out into the distribution system. This is the drawing, elevation of the future operations building, kind of gives you a little bit of a sense of what it looks like. This isn't, it's blown up from the original, so it loses a little bit of clarity, but this is block construction with some stacked stone and it has a metal roof on the building. The communications tower is similar to the one that we reviewed and approved on the Site 12 over by El Cidro. And again, it's not a full wireless communications facility, but rather a monopole for SCADA communication system. We went through an alternate citizen review process, which is one where we send early notice out to adjoining property owners within 500 feet and then, we respond to questions from anybody who contacts us. We don't hold a neighborhood meeting, particularly when there's not a lot of residential uses around the site. For the public hearings, we had notice published in the paper and mailed to the adjoining property owners and a sign posted on the property. We received no objections from many of the adjoining owners, but we did receive some comments from the City of Phoenix Aviation Department on behalf of the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and they had requested that we consider three additional stipulations. One was compliance with FAA guidance on hazardous wildlife attractants. A second one was obtaining a determination of no hazard from FAA for future construction and then, execution of an navigation easement limiting future uses and maximum height on the property. The public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on May 8th and the comments from the Phoenix Aviation Department were shared with the commission. Staff has recommended approval of the rezoning request as presented without the additional stipulations. At the public hearing, one person appeared, but just had a question about the nature of the operation of the water treatment facility. And a motion to approve the rezoning was passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of 6 to 0. So, in terms of findings, we believe the proposed rezoning is consistent with the general plan's business and commerce land use designation for the subject property, which specifically identifies the PFD district as a suitable use within that category. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the existing land uses and will be compatible with future industrial land uses on adjacent properties. Surrounding properties are predominantly industrial-zoned. The public uses proposed will serve the larger community and provide services that are needed to support the growth of the city. It's basically a necessary facility in order for our city to continue to grow. And then, lastly, I think, the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the general health, safety and welfare of the citizens and the general public since this site is separated from residential uses and is somewhat isolated. So, with that said, the city staff is recommending that you approve Resolution 2019-1970 declaring as public records certain documents that are identified in the resolution that are related to Ordinance 2019-1433 and then, ask you to approve Ordinance 2019-1433, which is the ordinance that would rezone the property to the Public Facilities District with a PAD overlay. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. The city is represented by Teresa Smith DeJesus, who is with Jacobson Engineering, and Barbara Chapel is also here from the Public Works Department if you have any more technical questions.
Thank you. Would they like to speak? They're welcome to come up and speak about. I have it in my notes that they were here. No?
I don't...
Don't think so?
Only if you, I would suggest to you, only if you had questions. I don't think they had any objections to the ordinance as prepared or the stipulations.
All right, that's fine. Are there any other speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Then, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution number 2019-1970 by title only?
Adopt Resolution number 2019-1970 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 19-06 Exhibit A, Rezone from Preliminary PAD, AG, PFD and I-2 with a PAD overlay to PFD with a final PAD overlay 19-200-00006. Exhibit B, City of Goodyear Public Facilities Campus Rezone Legal Description. And Exhibit C, City of Goodyear Public Facilities Campus Final PAD Overlay Development Regulations dated April 25th, 2019.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution number 2019-1970? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilmember Stip and a second by Councilwoman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Stip?
Joe, I'm curious about the request from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport and their stipulations, why those were not added to the, not added to the PAD tonight.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip, they made three recommendations and on advice of the city attorney's office, we declined to accept additional restrictions on our property. The FAA, compliance with the FAA guidance on hazardous wildlife attractants is not a specific requirement. The FAA offers guidance and we didn't feel it would be appropriate to self-restrict us in that manner. We certainly are aware of it and don't want to do anything to adversely affect the airport, but we didn't think that stipulation was appropriate. Obtaining a determination of no hazard from the FAA for future construction, it is required that if you construct within a certain distance of the airport and are constructing facilities over a certain height, it varies depending on the distance from the airport. You do have to file a notice of proposed construction, which we have included as one of the stipulations in the ordinance. They had asked that we consent to a determination of no hazard being found by the FAA and that's a restriction that is not required and we decline to impose that on ourselves. And then, lastly, execution of a navigation easement is, would potentially limit future uses and maximum height. And we have height restrictions already within the PAD overlay that we feel respect those concerns and should not create a problem for the airport, so we decline to modify that one.
Did we require liberty to work with compliance on the hazardous wildlife attraction on their facility as it relates to Luke off of Camelback? their facility as it relates to Luke off of Camelback? I think, didn't we require some netting over their wastewater treatment facilities?
Yeah, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stiff, yes, we did.
So we're not willing to take this same step? I hate to call it out like that, but it seems that if we're going to potentially be an attractant to many different bird species because of the waters, et cetera, that we would want to take the extra steps to make sure that we're not impeding the ingress or egress of the aircraft at the airport.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stiff, we certainly do not want to create a problem for the airport, and I don't think that it's our intent to do so. In the case of the Liberty property, we knew or felt that allowing that use at that location within proximity to Luke Air Force Base could potentially be a problem. And if I recall correctly, we were asked by Luke Air Force Base to take that into consideration, and we did. We have an existing wastewater treatment plant on the site, and I am not personally aware of any problems that we've had with attracting birds to that. And the rest of the facilities that are on the site either don't have open water or don't have exposure to water, that wouldn't necessarily create a problem. So we feel it's a little bit different besides the fact that we own the property.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Hampton.
Do we own the land east and west of the northern portion of that parcel? I'm just curious with the SR30 going in, will we be able to get to that northern portion of it there?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Hampton, yes, we do. And the area that we own is where this, the red line, which is about the alignment of Broadway and then all the way down to the plant. So the freeway effectively bisects that property, but staff has been in conversations already with ADOT regarding the SR30 design so that 157th Avenue and 159th Avenue could pass below the freeway.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
So there'd be connectivity.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Cano?
I'm very excited to see that we're going to have a large integrated Public Works Campus, including the surface water treatment plant. My question has to do with the Phases Two and Three. Would we do a similar notification process as we continue to develop the plant, such as we did with this, or does this PAD overlay take care of the entire thing?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Cano, the, there would not be a public process going forward for the Phase Two or Three expansion. The zoning would allow that to occur without a public process.
Then would the Goodyear, Phoenix Aviation Department have any say going forward, or would they have any involvement going forward?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Cano, the requirement to file a notice of proposed construction would still be there, and we would, of course, abide by that. And that would get routed by the FAA to the airport.
Thank you. Any other? All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember LoRatano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Will the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 2019-1433 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1433, conditionally rezoning approximately 155 acres of land located at and around the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility at 4980 South 157th Avenue to the Public Facilities District with a final planned area development district overlay, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgment, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance Number 2019-1433? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, her motion from Councilmember Cano and a second from Councilman LoRatano. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember LoRatano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Let's go down to Number 13. Non-business is to consider adopting a fiscal year 2020 tentative budget. Finance Manager and Budget Research, Lori Wigan-Roth, will present. And Lori is not having a few knee problems tonight, right, Lori? So she's going to stay seated for this, because this might last longer than your last presentation, so. Thank you.
Thank you for the consideration.
Yes.
We'll go through the tentative budget. This is the first of those more formal steps we have to do to complete adopting the city's budget. Oops, but I didn't bring down the clicker thing. We'll go through an overview of kind of the process that we use. Talk a little bit more about the process. We even talked about it in the complete picture throughout some of the most recent presentations. Kind of talk about the tentative budget in total and then what the changes are in it. We also indicated we provide you information on those capital project timelines. Again, we've been talking about the budget piece. Now, we're also going to be presenting to you the timeline piece that we intend to deliver within, and then we'll ask you to approve the tentative budget. And we did reorganize the materials a little bit from the last time. We went ahead and with the department overviews, we included what their supplemental requests were, what their CIP requests were, so that you could see those together. But we still added the, have the city schedules in their appropriate sections. And when we get to the CIP section, I'll kind of explain the timeline a little bit better for you. So the, again, the budget, the overall focus of the budget always starts with and is always concerned with building a sound-based budget. That base budget is what we use to continue the services that we're already providing, and it takes into consideration things like inflation. We also need to meet our obligations. Those are contracts and agreements we have, we also, and mandates. You know, that, going back to the base budget, I didn't mention that it includes both increases and reductions. An example of an increase would be inflation. An example of a decrease would be our credit card fees. We changed the provider for that along with the financial system, and that brought down credit card fees that the city has to pay. So that process goes through those pieces. Modernizing what we have has been a focus of the council for quite a while. We established those asset management programs a number of years ago and continue to fund and grow those, and that is also a goal in the strategic plan that the council adopted. And again, this year's budget, again, focuses on supporting the community as it grows, specifically a lot of change in funding allocated for some of those development services-related areas and where we are experiencing large building activity. But also the organization itself and its ability to support the growth in some of the more administrative support areas. Public safety continues to be an area of service priority, as well as the community, especially in the areas of recreation services that continue to be highly rated by our residents. And then, of course, always attracting and retaining a workforce has been a standard focus of the council as well. We need those folks to deliver those services. Kind of just to walk through the process, the budget process doesn't end, and when you act over the next couple of weeks to adopt the budget, it's a plan, it's not a fact. It is an operations guide, it's a plan, it tells us, it gives us authority to spend. But that process continues on, we don't put it to the side. We continue to monitor actuals throughout the year. You see us come back and talk to you about the need for budget transfers as those plans form into facts. Sometimes the facts are a little different than we forecasted they would be. In terms of council input in the process, we get your input throughout the work sessions that we do in the budget process. I'll talk about those on the next slide, but that started with the retreat and went through the presentation of the city manager's budget. The first major step in the budget process that's happening internal in the organization is building that base budget that I mentioned. We build that base budget in an environment where departments prepare a line item by line item budget request. They give us a new estimate for what they think it will cost to complete the current year, and then they give us an estimate for what they believe it will cost them to complete next year, the same things we're doing next year at the same, at the service levels we're delivering. That process involves the budget team reviewing those closely, and we raise any concerns or issues to the executive team as we go through that process. It's cooperative, and it is a process that does result in increases and decreases. It also looks for things like those items that don't happen every year but happen on some other schedule. So for example, the elections, they're every other year, so they're not in next year's budget. They're in this year's, and they'll be in '21. We have some IT agreements where we pay maintenance every three years to get a discount overpaying once a year. So those items, we carefully review to make sure that they're consistent with what's moving forward and what's expected of us. The process of developing the supplementals and the CIP kind of follows similar process. This year, there was a lot more focus on the CIP because of taking the time to really step back and come up with a better process for building our CIP. But essentially, both processes are, departments tell us what they believe they need, they provide justification and explanation for the need, how it would impact their ability to deliver services in the future. And then we go through kind of a technical review by the budget office in terms of the costs, and does it make sense, and is everything in the right place? And in the case of the CIP in particular, the Engineering Department Project Management Team, as well as the Procurement Group, also got imbued in those reviews throughout the process. And then we meet with the executive team on a regular basis to discuss what's coming up through that process, ultimately bringing forward the city manager's recommended budget that we presented to you in April. So it's, goes through many, many reviews as we go through this process. The next big piece of the budget process is the carryovers. The carryovers are items that can't be completed in a single year. Most carryovers are in the case of capital projects. You can't build a fire, you know, a fire station in a year, you can't buy the land, design it, construct it in a year. But we need to be, have the budget to award the contract in its full amount in the year we intend to award that contract, because we can't contract for something that isn't in the budget. And so we end up needing to carry over the portions of that budget that haven't been spent to give us the authority to spend. Because if you remember, one of the things I said that a budget is, it is authority to spend. And then the, this all came, comes forward and ends up in where we are now with the, some recommended changes that we've reflected in the tentative budget based on the feedback we had in the city manager's budget process. And we'll go through those a little bit more as we go, move forward. Just a quick recap of your involvement in work sessions and what, and the balance of the calendar. I mentioned the retreat in October. We talked to you about the general fund five-year forecast, and we did an early estimate on the revenues and what the year looked like. We had several discussions about financial policies with you, ultimately adopting those, related to those financial policies in March, so that we could use that to develop a recommended budget that was consistent with those financial policies. We've kind of changed that in the past. We heard your input, and then we had you adopt those policies along with the tentative budget, but we're changing that to where you're doing those before we develop those recommendations. Today, we're here, we did hold the open house that we've held for the last several years, where we have some information on that city manager's recommended budget. The budget staff are there to answer questions from anybody who attends. We also had several departments present, have presentations on some of the big capital projects moving forward, the recreation campus, the fire station had one of their, the public art that's planned for one of the stations, we had the surface water plant, and I'm sure I'm forgetting another one, and I apologize for that. And economic development also had some information on their efforts as well. So it was, a lot of departments pitched in on that and pulled together some information for the public to review. Today, we're looking at the tentative budget, and then after today, there's two more steps to get this thing finished. In terms of the overall tentative budget, keep in mind, the tentative budget establishes the top dollars that we can move forward with in terms of our budget when you adopt it in the next two weeks from now. It is $514 million. You'll notice that's a little bit lower than what you saw in the city manager's budget. That's because we went through and we updated carryovers on several large water and wastewater projects based on actual expenditures. We had another month of actual expenditures, and we're able to reduce some of those carryovers. That's the primary reason for that change. This shows where the money comes from. The only, there is a change in here in that we added a one-time revenue in the general fund that I'll talk about a little later. So fund balances down because of those carryovers and a little bit increase in some other general fund revenue. Just to, again, recap what the resource assumptions are in building this budget, there were no sales tax rate changes proposed. State shared revenues are at the amounts that were provided by the league. Still, we have not received the population portion of that adjustment, so those are not yet reflected, and will become, we're confident that our numbers will be higher than we currently have, and those will become savings moving forward for the next part of the budget, next budget process. We've aligned development-related revenues with those ongoing costs, and that resulted in some adjustments to revenue that we talked about previously. Just a reminder that the HERF and ballpark operating costs above their revenues are paid by transfers from the general fund, and so those are reflected, that policy. Wastewater and water rates are changed per the adopted five-year plan. Those increases go into effect in January of 2020. And of course, the budget that we're asking you to adopt includes that next rate study to develop that next five-year plan. And then the enterprise funds also pay for general administration and in lieu property taxes to the general government. Just a quick review of the property tax. Property tax, no change from what we presented to you at the manager's budget. We're showing a slight decrease in the combined rate, but as we've talked about in the past, we took a $100,000 home on the current tax rate, the combined tax rate, and show that that would be $173.50 in taxes. If your home experienced the maximum allowable appreciation, that would be 5% growth in your home value. Again, that's if you didn't expand it or something like that. Your tax would go with the current, with the proposed rate would go to $181, or $181.99 in Goodyear. The budget goes to basically, essentially what you saw before, again, just the changes associated with the carryover and a few small changes on some supplemental changes that we'll review. This just gives you an idea of how that general fund budget gets distributed to departments. As you can see, the priorities of public safety and recreation are clearly shown in the budget, with police, fire, and parks and recreation being the five largest departments. Then we start moving into some of the departments like IT that support everybody, engineering and those types, and move on from there. Public Works here is only their general fund budget. Obviously, that department has a lot of more, it's a much larger department because of its water, wastewater, and solid waste operations. This shows you the operating budgets for the other funds that fund day-to-day operations. Again, water at $12 million. HERF I'm showing there, the blue represents the portion that comes from the state, state shared revenues. The brownish color represents that general fund that goes in to support that department's budget. Solid waste, similar with ballpark, the blue represents the ballpark's revenue and the balance is the general fund support to that department. Now, kind of go through the changes since the city manager's budget. We have, and these primarily emphasize the general fund is where these changes happened. I will tell you, there's one that's not listed here, though, is in terms of the McDowell Improvement District, with some of the activity going on at the site, for example, where the civic square is going. As those properties are sold or begin to be developed, individuals may choose to pay off those McDowell Improvement Bonds early. So we did increase the budget So we did increase the budget for, and we're getting some indication that is going to happen. So we did increase the expected revenue from other property owners who would be paying their McDowell Improvement District assessments early. We've added a million dollars of revenue and a million dollars of expense. Just letting you know, because we have real, no real idea how to quantify that right now and it's an area where we could come back to you about budget transfers moving forward if more than that decide they would like to early retire those debts. But in terms of the general fund, as a result of some of the conversation at the city manager's budget presentation, we have added a supervisor in the court that is funded on a one-time basis as a temporary and it is funded with general funds and also with, with some of the court's restricted revenues as well. And the court has made the application to the appropriate entities for that to be, be available. You'll see a new item that we haven't specifically talked to you about before and that's to main, to maintain the grass on, on the Bullard Wash near where the civic square activity will be going on. Essentially, the grass will now be watered mode and those types of things from McDowell to Virginia. And then we would overseed in the winter for the area from Montevista to McDowell only at this point in time. And then we'll continue to monitor that, that area and decide if we need to expand any of that as those projects move forward. We, one of the ways we funded those changes was, we did, you may recall that we learned and incorporated in this year's budget that we were going to receive a rebate from the liability insurance. We've recently learned that we will again receive another rebate from the liability insurance next year. So we added that at, as a one-time revenue. In addition, there was an item recommending an electric vehicle charging station or stations to be added at the GMC. We just received those electric vehicles. You've probably seen them over at City Hall. So we haven't really had time to really evaluate the pilot, so we're recommending that we take a year to fully recommend the use of those vehicles and then also reconsider it again in terms of the location of where we'd want those stations as the civic square and the city hall portion are developed and we determine who's going where. So that's why we've removed that particular project. We did adjust a number of carryovers. One is, one I mentioned earlier this evening, that is the cost allocation and user fee study. We are working on procuring that now and we'll begin that process this year. The intent is to have that study complete, so when we present the, recommend a budget to you for FY21, we will have incorporated any of the user fee changes that are, result from that process. In terms of the CIP, we had errantly combined two streets that had similar looks, similar, that had similar names into a single project. It was the Cotton Lane and Estrella intersection and then the, work to improve the Cotton Lane to be able to widen that bridge or re-stripe the bridge. We'd accidentally combined that into a single project. We broke it back out into the two projects it should be. There was no funding change as a result of that. It was just an error to combine them. We have changed, we're recommending a change in terms of a couple of traffic signals. There originally in the manager's budget, we were recommending carryover of the Perryville and Indian School traffic signal. We are dependent on the developer getting some work done there as well. So that project is not as ready to go as we believe the Camelback and Saraville traffic signal will be ready to go. So what we've done is we've eliminated the carryover of the Perryville and Indian School traffic signal and used those savings to add the Camelback and Saraville traffic signal. And again, traffic signals may come back to you as we go through the year. They are highly dependent on development at certain points in time and they're an area where we expect there could be some, hey, we need to add this one or change that one. So you will, you'll be advised of those items. We also talked to you about originally that the civic, the city, existing city halls, there was a project in there for $429,000 to do repairs at the facility, given that the civic square then came up and moved forward much more quickly than we were initially planning when the CIP work began. We did go back and look at that project as we indicated we would and we eliminated it down to only the work on the parking lot over there at City Hall and then also some funding for HVAC repairs. Those two projects, it was originally a $429,000 project. Those two projects are at 75,000 for the parking lot and the balance of, I think it's 5000, 54,000 went to the HVAC. Because those are less than 100,000 in the CIP, we moved those to the department's operating budget, so they're no longer in the CIP. And we used the $300,000 in savings as we talked about our plan for funding the civic square. That 300,000 was added to the civic square reserve project. And again, as I mentioned earlier, one of the main reasons the budget is lower is because we've updated the carryovers on actual spending and like I say, that was two, mainly came from two water, wastewater projects. We also had some other carryover revisions. We've carried over a cost estimator that's now in the base budget, so we don't need to carry over the additional funds and a couple of our missing carryovers such as that cost allocation study. The tentative budget includes 35.8 new positions. If you recall, when we made our presentation for the city manager's budget, that number was 36.3. We indicated that we had a full-time to part, a part-time to full-time conversion. We had added the full-time, but we hadn't removed the half-time, part-time. So that's why that number has decreased by half of, of, of part-time position. So that puts us at 639 full-time positions, which hasn't changed and reduced the part-time equivalents to 40.8. The salary and benefits that were included in the base budget are those items, and, and I'm bringing these up because they're, you know, the next largest item after the supplementals in terms of the changes in the, in the, in the budget from one year to the next. The, both fire and police represented were already negotiated. They include a 5% step or lump sum and in the case of fire, a 1.5% market. Police, the market is 2.5% for the police officer rank. And again, that is, police have dealt with sergeants and police officers in terms of their markets at different points in the two-year agreement. All of their employee groups are receiving a 4% merit and/or lump sum. And there's no change in the cost of health benefits to the employee or the city. We did mention some changes in the plan and I think you've all had a chance to see those because HR has distributed those materials and held the, the open houses. In terms of what is added in this, kind of the supplementals and the capital projects as new items, the budget adds six sworn police positions for neighborhood, homeless outreach and investigations. Again, this is kind of just recapping what we went through in more detail in the manager's budget. 4.8 of that, of the position additions are support positions within police and fire. Seven positions are in those development-related areas, kind of supporting growth that, at the level at which growth has sustained for quite a while, at kind of a base level. Certainly, there are additional temporary staffing in those areas as well. And then 6.8 positions are for the enterprise-funded operations, just keeping those plants and projects moving forward. Major capital projects include the two fire stations, the recreation campus and continuing the surface water project. Obviously, there's a number of other capital projects, but those are the, the two major highlights that I think the community will, will recognize. Kind of walking into the capital projects part of this, just to remind you, we redefined a capital project to be something that's 100,000 in order to make it into the CIP. They include new facilities, remodeling existing facilities. That, you know, you will find a study in the operating budget that's over 100,000 dollars, such as the cost allocation and user fee study, that was at 150. So the studies that go into the CIP are those that are supporting a capital project or would be working on developing future capital projects such as a master plan. And then we've also changed this year when, by establishing that 100,000 a number. We also indicated that all funds should be represented in the CIP if they are doing activity that would be, be over 100,000 and be the character of a CIP project. So you will now see some of those things that have been in the asset management funds sitting in the operating budget in the CIP now, mainly large vehicles and some of the right-of-way work that Parks does. And then all impact-funded, impact fee-funded activities in the CIP because it's specifically restricted to capital needs by the state law. The CIP process, you know, we, I mentioned earlier kind of how the process works. One of the additions that I didn't mention to the CIP process earlier was that we did bring in an outside cost estimating service. They didn't estimate every project. We picked a selection of different types of projects. It was almost a good tool for us to see how did, what we costed compared to what that cost estimator cost did so that we could look for ways to improve what we're doing. And as I've mentioned, we've continued to include that in the base budget for future CIP processes as well. In terms of the timeline, the, the process was similar to the costs. The departments identified what they thought their timelines would be. As you look at this, the timelines, I want to remind you that when you look at a time for a specific phase, it takes into account the staff preparation work, the actual procurement process. So it, in some cases, you may look at this and say, you know, why would it take, you know, nine months to design this? It seems very simple. Well, in order to procure the actual consultant to do that work, somebody has to write a scope of work, somebody has to, then we have to, you know, procurement reviews that, we have to put it out to be bid on. Some, some can be bid on in a week, some you have to give people a month to bid on. So, those kinds of timelines are built into this and, you know, you have to enter into a contract. So, as you look at them, you know, that may be something that may make something seem longer, but it is the beginning of working on that phase to the end of that working on that phase from the day that department starts thinking about putting it down on paper to actually having that phase complete. And as I mentioned previously, engineering, procurement and the executive team, we're all very closely involved in, in going through the process, both on which projects we would move forward with and then working on the timelines and prioritizing. Because again, I'll remind you, the constraint on the CIP has been our ability to administer and deliver the projects with our, from within the departments and not the financial constraints. And so part of this most recent step and this last step was saying, okay, now we know we want to do all of these projects in this year, they can't all start on July 1st. So we had to go through the process of saying, we still have to smooth these out over the year. And especially involve procurement in that because they also have to procure non-CIP activities as well. So, that was primarily what we've been doing since the last time we spoke. What you'll see are project planned completion dates. We could, we got into debates, you'd be surprised how many ways you could define the end of a project. I, at least I was. So what we're saying you're seeing here as a planned completion date is, that's the date that, you know, you'd be driving on that road, the, the public could go use the park. It is not the day all the bills will be paid because there's warranties, there's, you know, other things that happen afterwards. We withhold money to make sure everything's good. So, that's what we're, that date represents and we'll continue to work on defining more of the dates and, and look at if there's a point in time we should add other dates to your information, but we believe that's really what you and the public care about is, when, when can I use it? And then kind of walk through the, the timeline to cover the rest of this. So on, in the materials you received, this is just our sampling of projects from the timeline, mostly just so I can walk you through what this timeline represents and what the color coding means. And then the next slide, I'll go through the big projects and what their timelines look like. But we've used a color coding system, the, the timeframe shown by the color coding are fiscal year quarters. So if it's the first quarter of 2020, that means sometime in the first quarter of 2020, of that, of next fiscal year, so between July 1 and, and September 30th, we will start working on that project. And in the case of the one that, the first one that's on there, that's, we're already working on it. And the last quarter, that's when that phase will end. Underlying this, it might really be that the work is starting on August 1st. So you can't see some of that more detailed work we did with procurement to get to, well, this one's coming in July, this one's coming in August, this one's coming in September because it would be a little bit more time, or difficult to show you this by month. So we went to quarter. And then we all internally struggle with reminding ourselves that the first quarter is July and the third quarter is January. So, Phil, you know, don't, don't fret because we, we sat there in many of these meetings saying, well, what does this mean? It says it's going to be in, completed in May of 21, but this thing goes out to the fourth quarter of, you know, 21 and, and so that it causes some confusion. The color coding, yellow is pre-scope or study, so if it's just a study, it's only yellow. But if it's pre, more detailed scoping of a project, that's a bigger project, then there's other phases as well. Land is a purple color, design is an orangey, brownie color, blue is construction and green is FFNE and other, others would include, include things like audits and studies that we have to do for the impact fee program. And then in, in going through this, you'll see the project number, which is an important thing for us to know what we're talking about, the name of the project, that planned completion date that I mentioned, that's the, when we, somebody will be able to use it. In some cases, it won't be a date, you know, for example, the Adam and Well payoff, it's just a one-time payment, it's going to happen then. The, there'll be others where you'll see it says ongoing, those are like those developer reimbursements, so there's not a specific date that we know will, when they will end, it's based on the revenue we receive. So you'll see some like that that don't have a specific date. Then, in terms of some of the key projects, to give you a sense, the recreation campus, I've got it listed here as the Recreation Center, but it actually is reflective of all the projects associated with that particular campus. We are in design. That should be complete by the end of, by the end of March because that would be the third quarter of 20, or of FY20. We expect construction to go through the third quarter of fiscal year 21 and there'll still be some equipment being brought in, chairs and tables and those kinds of things on into the fourth quarter, but we're showing that that project would be available in May. The Fire Station 181, again, we're in the early phases of design on that. That's, and that project is expected to be completed by March of 21. The one, Station 186 also includes buying a, a piece of a, a pumper for that facility, so it has a little bit longer green line because it takes a long time to get a, a fire pumper in. So that's why that FFNE or other phase actually starts right away. It takes, those are long lead time items. But that project would be completed by December of 2020. The Civic Square, still, you know, we're just moving forward with that. That study will be continuing on into next fiscal year that you funded this year and that will actually end up being an unbudgeted carryover that we'll have to add because that happened after we developed the carryover part of the budget. And we're showing that project will be completed by June of 22. And that, of course, is in conjunction with a private, a public-private partnership, so. And then we've just listed then the three big water and wastewater projects that are moving forward. The Site 12 improvements are in process, well, actually, all three of these are in process and just showing when those completion dates are. So kind of captured the highest profile projects as well as the highest dollar projects for you in this snapshot. Last slide before asking you to do something is the more details on what's coming up next so that you're aware. In May and June, there is required publications. We have to do a truth and taxation ad and a press release that will happen this week. And next, there are some budget publications that have to happen. The truth and taxation ads are very specific where they have to be and what they have to look at, like, the budget publications kind of get buried in the classified. Like, the budget publications kind of get buried in the classifieds and are harder to find. And that's just the way they're, the statutes require they be handled. On June 10th, we'll come back to you. We'll have the public hearings on budget adoption and on truth and taxation. On that day, we'll ask you to adopt the truth and taxation increase or act to accept that, and then also to adopt the budget. And then two weeks later, we come to you and ask you to do the property tax levy. So what we're recommending is that you approve the tentative budget in the amount of $514 million. It's included in the materials summarizing it per the state statutes are in here. I will let you know that Resolution 2019-1925, which adopts the tentative budget in your original packet, had incorrect date for the next meeting that June, or that, the June 10th date was still listed, or June, I'm sorry, the June 24th date was still listed in last year's calendar. So that has been corrected in what you'll be approving today. Be happy to answer any questions or?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Right with the city clerk, please read Resolution 2019-1925 by Title Only, please.
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1925, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 estimates of revenues and expenses for the City of Goodyear, including estimated property tax levy and property tax rates as the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adoption of budget and setting the tax levies.
Thank you. May I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution 2019-1925? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Vice, by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tano?
I, I just want to say thank you of everybody who worked very hard on this, getting this for us. I have to say this probably, since I've been here, one of the easiest and most complete budget presentations that we've gone through. So I'd like to thank the city manager, thank Lori, thank everybody from finance, all the department. I mean, it was, I'm fine with it. So thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Again, I want to echo those thoughts. I thought one of the things that was very helpful was the prelim ahead of time, where we went through some of those key issues and you kind of got a feeling for where our priorities were and, and feedback on what was going forward into the budget. And I think it had a lot to do why the presentation went as smoothly as it did. So I would just suggest keep that same path, because it worked very well this year. And, and also, I, I printed out a copy of the timelines for the CIP. I really appreciate this. I think this is the first time in many, many moons that we've ever seen anything like this. So as opposed to in the past, where we have CIPs, where we just kind of put them in there and hopefully they get done. Now we have something to measure and benchmarks to see when and if they get done. So again, I, I thank you for all your hard work put into this. I know what's involved, because I used to do it. So I know the work that goes into this thing. So you and your staff, anybody who touches this, I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Any other, thank you, Joe. Any other comments?
I got one.
Councilman Hampton, I'm sorry for, forgot you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well. I thought it was a really smooth process as well. And I just had a quick question. I hate to go back. But Slide 19, can you, can you remind me what that I-10 interchange is?
On which slide?
Slide, that one right there.
I'm sorry, Estrella Parkway, that is the bridge, yeah, that's the intersection. No, yeah, thank you. I'm going, which one, is that one?
Sorry.
Thank you. That is for the underneath I-10 on, along Estrella Parkway. Today, there's two lanes in each direction, and we essentially want to peel back so that you can have three lanes in each direction, similar to what you have at Bullard.
Okay, thank you. I just, in my mind, I wasn't picturing that, so thank you.
That's a good thing. I said, that's a good thing.
No, it's a good, good project. I just, in my mind, I didn't, I didn't know what it was, so. No, no, thank you. Yeah, I thought it was a good presentation and I appreciate all you guys' hard work, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just have a couple of questions, Lori. I went page by page again, just so that I knew and understood. Thank you for putting in the additional staff for the court. You said it was one-time funding. So are we going to propose next year to reinstate that position? So we're not hanging them on one year at a time?
I'll take a stab at it. I think the, the first intent was that there is a desire to evaluate the true need for that position. I, I think there's every intent that if it's needed, that it would come back and the request would be for a full-time position.
Great. All right, I, I did not find anywhere in the narrative that we identify our, maybe the 25 top employment centers or employers that we have here in Goodyear. You know, it used to be Lockheed Martin, it's no longer. So that might be interesting. And then for fire, I would like to see the number of EMS calls, the number of fire calls, the number of miscellaneous calls and what the response time is somewhere in their department. The same with police. What their, I think it would also be interesting to find out how many, and, and put it in the budget, how many thousands of 911 calls that police actually receives? Because then that, that will hopefully let the public understand why we're funding those two departments the way we are, because the need is there. Even though we talk about it, they don't necessarily know that it's there.
If I may address that, Mayor and Council, we, we are slowly improving this budget process as quickly and as fast as we can.
Sure.
We've always included that kind of data in the published budget. Our goal is in next year's budget process to have you be able to see the performance type data throughout the process. And yes, we do publish those top employers in both the CAFR and in the actual annual budget documents. So you'll see those when we get to that point.
Okay, and then also add, if you, I mean, just suggestions, add how many parks we have and how many acres, things like that. That's really interesting. And then that explains why the budgets are what they are. And I had one last question, if you don't mind. Let me get it real quick. Sorry. Okay, got it. All right, the question I got is, I'm sorry, got to put my glasses on. This one is really skinny print.
Yeah. We do a fold-out version sometime in the big book, both the fold-out and the little one.
Oh, good. Well, this is fine. This was good. I had my magnifying glass.
It's one everybody uses.
Yeah, so it says Goodyear Community Park relocation. We're moving it because of State Route 30 coming through the property. Is that what we're doing?
The, the, is this in the capital project?
No, it says Parks and Rec, Parks, Arts and Ballpark Projects. Goodyear Community Dog Park relocation.
I believe that's to study the potential relocation.
Oh, okay, great.
If you're looking at that, it's probably, is it a yellow in that?
No, uh-uh, no.
Oh, if you look at it, I'm sorry, on the timeline, it's in.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not there.
It is just a study. It's not actually doing anything other than determining the best courses of action.
All right, and do you mind telling me what the Franklin Pierce University tentative improvement is? In the five-year CIP?
I'll let Julie handle that one. I don't know the current status of it, so.
Are we reconstructing the, the facilities where they are now to include the community room? Is that possibly what it is?
The initial project is using the, they're expanding into the Building A, where the financial system project room was?
Well, y'all call it that. We call it the community room. Because when we finish training on the new system, we were going to open that up for the community to use. So, yeah, I thought maybe that's what it was.
So just to add, Mayor and Council, so this would be a short-term agreement, we believe, with Franklin Pierce that allows them to immediately expand their program, knowing that they are ultimately looking for a more permanent home here in Goodyear.
Okay, good. Are they going to need more? Would they necessarily be taking possibly where police is now? When they move police into the building, when it's finished in a couple of years? Would they be interested in taking that or even the library when we move the library?
Thank you for the question. Actually, they're interested in doing their own site-built campus. So we're still in initial conversations with them, but that would be very exciting locate for Goodyear. And certainly, as we go into the Civic Square conversation, we know we're going to have available space and we look forward to discussing with Council how to utilize that.
I just want to be sure we had enough going for them, so that if they are ready to do something, we're ready to step in and help them with whatever we need to do.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Oh, and wonderful job. Thank you. It was a great budget presentation.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, let's go to 14.
You from the whole team that you complimented.
Thank you very much. Order, 14, item on business is consider approving the request for the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel, 9.22 and 9.24 A and B. Planner 2, Alex Lotinsky presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, Estrella Parcel 9.22, just for reference, it actually consists of 9.22, 9.24 A and 9.24 B, which is this area in red. It's about 53 acres located in Monacita, Monacito, excuse me. In 2018, the Monacito PAD was updated and designated this parcel as Single Family Detached 50 or SFD 50. Last Monday, the final plat for parcel 9.31 was approved by Council. I mean, it's just north of this site. This parcel consists of 111 lots, single-family detached, and 17 tracts. The lot sizes in the parcel are planned to be 65 feet wide and 125 feet deep. And all development standards will be regulated by the Monacito PAD. A portion of the property is located adjacent to the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility. There is a requirement that without noise and odor controls, residential development is only allowed within 1,000-foot setback, which is this line right here. And if noise and odor controls are implemented, then residential development can take place at a 350-foot setback, so that's the second line. The facility is currently operating on about four and a half acres. So it's this purple area. And then future buildout, which was all of that white area, is in yellow on this exhibit. So as shown on this exhibit, the 1,000-foot setback, without noise con, or noise and odor controls exceeds the area. So this is the last lot of development in that 1,000-foot boundary. Staff has worked with the applicant to stipulate that the preliminary plat for two items in particular. One is complying with the noise and odor control requirements. That's also required by the state, state statute. And then number two is that the applicant shall install signage at the point of future buildout, just so residents are aware that there is future buildout proposed. That being said, the preliminary plat meets the requirements of the city's regulations as well as the standards required by the Monacito PAD. Staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote 5 to 1 on Wednesday, May 8th. This concludes my presentation. Pete Tyke is here to answer any questions you might have, and I can answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcels 9.22 and 9.24 A and B? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Heard a motion from Councilmember Stiff, and I hear a second. I believe the second was from Vice Mayor Campbell. All right, open for council discussion. No discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Let's go on to our last item, number 15, to consider approving the request for the preliminary, I'm having trouble telling preliminary this evening, plat for Camelback Center PV 303. Planning Manager Katie Wilkins.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This request is for a preliminary plat for the Camelback Center at Palm Valley 303. And I think I have a presentation, hopefully. What? Yeah. I will. I can use MO. There it goes. Computer best I can. The site is located at the southeast corner of Camelback and Pebble Creek Parkway. So this is Pebble Creek Parkway, Camelback and Charles. It's part of the PV 303 industrial park zoning. I'm sorry, it's so hard to see. And the proposal is to split 135 acres into two industrial lots, which will facilitate industrial development. It's served by Liberty Utilities Water and Sewer, and the development will be responsible for adjacent half-street improved, half-street improvements on the adjacent arterials and collector roadways. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are you finished?
Yes.
All right, I just kept watching what you were doing with your computer. I didn't know. So can I have a, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, can I have a motion a second to approve preliminary plat Camelback Center at PV 303 and subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilmember Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. No discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. So you're down to information items. Does the council have any comments or combination reports to make tonight? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Yeah, there was a few of us at the Palm Valley A-plus School Award today. And I was amazed, always amazed at that school, the synergy that the teachers put in, the students, the actual program itself. So want to congratulate Litchfield Park District and the Palm Valley Elementary School for getting their A-plus award today. So again, great, great event.
Good. Anybody else? Councilman Kano?
I wanted to give a shout out to the County Attorney's Office has a citizen academy. And it shows what happens once our officers drop their customers off at jail and how they pick up the story from there, from checking them in to initial appearance and then on through the process of the prosecution and such. So like many other government entities, they're interested in helping the public understand their role and function as an arm in law enforcement. So I just highly recommend it for anybody who wants to attend.
Yes, Councilman Hampton?
I might be still in some thunder, but I went to the Goodyear Fire EMS Open House on Saturday and also to the Kids to Park Day. So my kids both like those two events, and then we got to use the splash pad after. And then I also went to a graduation for Awafria High School, which was pretty neat, too.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
I got to speak to Senior Government Class at Estrella about a week ago. And our school resource officer, MacFadden, told me a little bit about the vaping, which I think is very interesting. He showed me something that he had just confiscated. So perhaps, I don't know if you have samples available, Chief, to show people what is out there when we do our vaping thing, because the white paper was excellent written. And doing what I do every day, I didn't know about some of this stuff. I would love to get a copy of the presentation that was, you guys used before, so we could get it out to our, like, groups and other parents and stuff. If there's something that's simple, I could post, I could send out to other parents. Because I can tell you, and I showed, I talked to some of my friends who have kids too, and they're like, and they do criminal justice, both prosecutor and defense, and we're like, what? You know, so if we don't know what's going on, these kids are smarter. And I personally have a problem with Amazon selling that hoodie. And I don't know if this is going to be covered, but I don't know if the League of Cities is interested in writing a letter to Amazon or because even if it's just, hey, guys, don't do this, this is not good for our kids. I'll write a letter. I don't care. I just think we need to, to say, hey, this isn't a good thing. That was a very well-written paper, so thank you.
Anybody else? Vice Mayor?
Well, I attended the Small Business Summit, Mayor, and gave remarks on your behalf. and gave remarks on your behalf. And it was wonderful, it was very well-attended and it was really interesting to do that. We did a ribbon cutting for Me Time Spa, which is going to be really fun. It's behind Merly's Grill in the shopping, JCPenney Shopping Center. And it's kind of tucked at the very end. It's kind of hard to find, but it's just a great place. And I suggest everyone go there, very reasonable and you can do monthly or one time.
Sounds good.
For a month. And let's see, I did, I went to the EMS Firehouse Open House, which was wonderful, as well as Kids to Park Day. And every year, the Kids to Park Day gets just a little bit better. They had a fire truck there that they hired from a company and they put out the hose and the kids got to spray the water. And then it also had the siren going and everything. The kids love that. They had a bubble machine.
One for them.
They shot all the bubbles and it's just going everywhere and the little kids are running all over. And then they could shoot each other with a water gun and they thought that was just great. But it's really a lot of fun, so. And then, of course, this morning at the school was just really phenomenal.
Thank you for, thank you for doing that. I couldn't make that, I appreciate it.
They missed you, but they understood.
And I got an email this morning, it says, we're expecting you. And I went, oh.
No, that's all right. They understood that you had just flown home and they just said they'd give you their best.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, City Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, just a few updates. I want to enhance some of those comments with some of our numbers. So we did last Thursday, in partnership with the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce, host the Economic Development Small Business Summit. We had more than 60 attendees attend this event and did want to thank Vice Mayor Campbell for representing Goodyear and inviting everyone as we were the host city. We had a special appearance by our Arizona State Representative, Joanne Osborne. Breakfast was provided by the Haymaker Restaurant and they had seven different speakers. And so it was kind of a fast-paced morning and I think the attendees liked that. Wanted to thank the staff who helped coordinate the summit. It was a great event and received very positive feedback. Also wanted to highlight the Goodyear Fire EMS Open House on Saturday. We believe we had about 300 visitors in attendance who learned about home safety, CPR, and stop the bleed training, water safety, about all the equipment that we use and to tour the fire truck. I also wanted to give a special thanks to the Abrazo Emergency Room staff who participated in the event and shared information. We do have city offices closed in observance of Memorial Day this coming Monday. Emergency and fire, emergency, fire and police services will operate as normal and the city will reopen at 8:00 AM on Tuesday. No trash recycling or bulk refuse service on the holiday. The services will resume a day in advance. And if you'll humor me, if I can come forward for a moment?
Please do.
And I'd like to invite Laney Triplet to come into council chambers for me. And I have to do this because once she leaves the back behind the curtain, she can't move any of the cameras around. What's that? Thank you, see the door.
There she comes.
So I wanted to acknowledge Laney Triplet. She has given her notice to the city. After eight years, she's going to be pursuing some new adventures. And so we wanted to have you come out from behind the curtain so we could, I know, so you could acknowledge us. And I just wanted to say thank you for me coming in as a new city manager. You were one of the first people who welcomed me and you have trained me to work in front of a camera. And I don't know how I'm going to do it without you, but we wanted to acknowledge all the work that you've done in support of the city council meetings over the last eight years and the work you've done in the video world with the InFocus Live and On the Job with Julie and you just have a very special talent and a very special heart. So I wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for your service.
Don't go anywhere because, no, 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 don't you dare leave already. I'm going to turn this over to council because you have been so dear to us and you've been so helpful and advanced us in many ways. So council, who would like to talk first? Councilwoman Laura Tannen?
Thank you for all that you do. We always see you at every event, you know, getting the great shots and it's just amazing all you do and all the work you've put in for the city in all these years. So we are really indebted for everything and we wish you so well on your new adventures. We'll miss you, wish you could stay, but wish you the best of luck.
Any other? Councilman Stiff?
Laney and I get to spend a lot of time on the phone together and I expressed my appreciation earlier. But the professionalism of the video work, but also helping to help with the technology this past spring has been, was tremendous. So as I wished you well earlier, again, I wish you the best and I hope to see you around the valley sometime.
Councilmember Laura Tannen? I'm sorry, Kano?
Well, I first met Laney when I was on the Arts and Culture Commission and so your work goes way beyond and you've just been a positive influence to all of us. And I would just echo everybody else, we wish you the very best. We were fortunate to have you for eight years and we launch you with our blessing.
Councilman Hampton, go ahead.
I'd say thank you as well for all the hard work and helping us try to look good up here as well, the cameras. So thank you for trying hard for that as well. And yeah, we'll wish you all the best, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, we'll miss you, Laney. You're one of the few bright spots that we knew we could go to with an idea and you wouldn't poo-poo it. You'd either try to help us figure out how to do it or you would come up with a wonderful suggestion on doing it. Because I remember when you helped me do a video to send to NLC and I was hitting the golf ball or something, I don't know. But you've just been so creative and you've just been such an important part to that department. It's going to be very hard to fill your shoes, Laney, because we love you and we trust you and we're going to miss you.
Well, we've had quite a relationship, haven't we? And I'm going to really miss you. I don't know if you realize this, but when I got elected mayor, she came to the rescue to help me to speak on the video and whatever we were doing, in a car or walking or running or whatever. We've been at every place in the city. You're very knowledgeable in what you do, very creative. And you have a very special personality and people feel very comfortable around you. And sometimes in public life, when you have to produce something, it can be very threatening. And you've made it, you feel comfortable all the time. And all the cheat sheets you've had for me so I could get through these things, I can't thank you enough. And I just wish you the best. And you're not going to get away. We've decided we're going to meet you for lunch in Scottsdale. So we already told you that. So anyway, I hope your future is successful and that you're happy. I do know it's going to be wonderful that you aren't going to drive that distance every day and every evening. So we wish you well. Let's give her a round of applause. I believe that's all our information that has to be placed. Anything else that you need, City Manager? Okay, the next meeting will be a work session on June 3rd, 2019, at 5:00, followed by an executive session. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.